Okay. Good morning. Today is September 25th, 2025. I am Kathy Hopkins, District Five Representative and Chair. And I now call this special meeting of the Kansas State Board of Education to order. This meeting has been called to begin the discussion on the process of hiring a new Commissioner due to Dr. Watson's retirement announcement. The Kansas Constitution states the State Board of Education shall appoint a Commissioner of Education who shall serve at the pleasure of the Board as its executive officer. Nine members of the Board are present, five of us are here in person, and four are on Zoom. Board Member Porter is unable to be with us today. Dr. Watson is here to my left. Board Attorney Mark Ferguson is also attending via Zoom. The mission statement for the Kansas State Board of Education is to prepare Kansas students for lifelong success through rigorous, quality academic instruction, career training, and character development according to each student's gifts and talents. Our vision is for Kansas to lead the world in the success of each student. At this time, we will pause for a moment of silent reflection or prayer. Let us rise and join in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay. Before we approve the agenda, I actually have a couple of changes. The order is actually going to be almost flipped. So we're actually going to start with thoughts from each Board member, and then we'll kind of flow from there into the rest of that. We also are going to be adding an item. And to do so, I'm going to point out that to hire a search firm, we have to go through the RFP process through the Department of Administration first. So we're going to add an agenda item with the possibility of action to have a three-person subcommittee set up for the RFP process. Okay. With those changes in mind, I would entertain a motion to approve the agenda.
So move.
Danny, second. Melanie? All in favor, please raise your right hand.
One, two, three, four, five, six, seven.
Seven opposed? One?
No, I'm not opposed.
Oh, okay. So Connie's a, so we have an eight, one, zero vote. Motion passes. Okay. Before we get started, I do want to just say something real quick. This will be a brief time for each Board member to share their thoughts about how to begin. It's important that we each contribute our unique points of view and that we listen to one another. Today is not a time for debate. As we begin the most important task of our elected position, we must remember the Commissioner of Education position is multifaceted, from working with an ever-changing ten-member board, leading a large agency, connecting with and supporting all of our local district leaders and educators, and that's only a part of this position. So as we begin, please remember our professional boardmanship is critical as we work as individuals together on the tasks before us. Let our posture be such that all who are looking to us to make this decision can feel assured that we are undertaking this with humility and the full weight of the responsibility that it is. This is a profound opportunity to work together for the future of Kansas education. So at this time, I will call on each member by district, I and Danny, as leadership will actually go last, to give each member a chance to share in three minutes their thoughts, if they wish. You absolutely don't have to. To share their thoughts on how to begin the search. And yes, we'll be timing you. I am sure that we've each been contemplating these past two weeks what this looks like. Please understand that today is about the first step, which is the search. Everyone received the timeline and the summary of the 2014 search process, and then I had Deborah send out the couple examples of firms and just what the process is, just to get us all kind of knowing what that looks like or can look like. We want to be careful not to get into the weeds of every part of the process because we're here to take this one step at a time. So with that in mind, I will ask you to listen to each member as they speak. Please do not respond to that. Simply give your own perspective of what you're thinking about this process, the start of the process, which is again the search. Okay? So with I and Danny going last, I will start with District Two, which is Melanie Haas.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I guess I drew the short straw, huh?
Do we, I'm sorry, do we have the timer up for us?
Eric had it on his, we can't see you on the Zoom.
Yeah, you have to have your picture up, kind of, maybe. So maybe we'll have to do it different.
It's only on your Hollywood Square. Just show my age, sorry.
There it is. It's just very small.
Okay. So can you start that at three minutes so she gets the full? Okay.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and thank you for those guardrails that we're just talking about, the beginning of the process, because I immediately went, there's no way we can fit all of the many things that are going to come up into three minutes. When I think about this, there's not a good analogy for what we're doing. It's not like a corporation hiring a CEO. That's kind of the closest that I could get is, what does it look like when another board goes to hire their CEO? A corporate board's going to rely on their existing networks because those are people that work in that industry, and those of us that sit at this table, we don't all work in education. In fact, a lot of the people that sit at this table haven't, to the best of my knowledge, haven't even been hiring managers, been part of an HR team. So I think it's important that we look at an executive search firm as a starting point because they are going to guide us through this process well. They'll conduct a fair, a fair search, they'll cast a wide net, they'll keep that search broad, they'll take the administrative tasks off of our plates, but at the same time, you know, they will guide us through. And so I, obviously, it worked the last time because you have the Commissioner sitting next to you, and we've got some options to choose from. But I just want to emphasize, I've heard at this board table a lot lately that, well, we can save money by not spending money on this thing. And I think that the money that we will spend to hire that firm is going to be critical to making sure that we have a positive outcome in this process. So I don't want to create a situation too where this board can later be blamed for not doing the job well. If we fail to hire the right person, if the person that we bring in, for whatever reason, then separates, that is an incredibly expensive experience for everyone, and it's a huge setback to education in Kansas. So we owe it to our districts, our students, our families, all Kansans, to make sure that we do this right. And if that means that we spend a little bit of extra money to find the right group to guide our board through this process, I'm 100% for that. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Look at you, under three minutes. Good job. Okay, District Three, which would be Michelle Dombrowski.
Good morning, everyone. Thank you, and thank you for this time. I, looking back at the history, I do like, I'd just like to throw it out there, I do like the three-member committee possibly appointed by the Chair, who is also elected by the Board, to possibly appoint those people or beyond that. That's just my thoughts throwing out there, that, because just, just to get the process started, like you said, this is early stages, and I think just to kind of get it down to like maybe three people and then bring that, bring that information that we find to the Board so we can all give our input, I think that that's important. But just getting through that initial process, and yes, a firm, there's, there's a lot of firms out there, and I think the person that would be in that role would be kind of like a CEO or, you know, chief executive officer type position. And I think that that, that's, that's the type of firm that I would be, I would be interested in as far as at least looking at different, when we're looking at different firms. So I don't have a lot, I don't want to take a lot of time because I know this is a very preliminary, and we're just getting started, and I just wanted to put those thoughts out there this morning. Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate that. District Four.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Connie, I am so sorry. I'm like, what are my numbers here? Sorry. Okay.
Thank you, Madam Chair. This is kind of new to me. I've done other things where we had to appoint new people, but my concern, my, I guess, my, what I want to see is the Board provide a strong oversight, refined priorities, clear expectations of senior leadership, and align the values for a long-term vision for education in the state of Kansas. I think the Board needs to have transparency and alignment with the values of our education system, especially if changes are going to occur during that time. So those are my visions. Thank you.
Thank you, Connie. Appreciate that. And then District Six. Should have looked at your name tag. You have your district number.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Having a little bit of experience in this process through two of the former districts in which I worked, I know that it is a very important process. It's a weighty process in that the selection, so much is going to hinge on, hinge on who is in this role. But as we get started, I think it is important to rely on the search firms, get their input as well as what they can offer, which is probably candidates from all across our nation. However, Kansas' education family is just that, in my opinion. It is a family. And I would think that perhaps if we were able to get feedback, maybe from some of our current superintendents, on the qualities that they would like to see in the Commissioner. As I said before, and I'll continue to say, there is not another Dr. Randy Watson that we could just pick up and sit in the chair, but there are people who I'm sure could bring a lot of what Kansas individuals would appreciate in a leader. So those would be my two suggestions.
Thank you. Appreciate that. District Seven would be Dennis.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just interested in looking at the timeline that we keep moving in a positive way, and I know that sometimes processes can get really heavy with information, but I, I think that NASB is probably a good resource for us to start with because there, we are invested in them and as oversight in a lot of other ways, and they have some interest in us too because we, you know, represent a part of our, our good country that we look to education as for the future in citizenship. And so I just think they would be a good starting point. As far as the candidates are concerned, I just think that it would be really helpful to look at it in a value sense that what, what is the person that we're looking for, their ideas about education actually working out in the classroom setting, and not so much from a business standpoint, you know, we, our, our mission is to serve the, the children of Kansas, and so I used to see that as a priority, and I, I hear that coming from some of the other members that really, family value centered, and that would be my, my focus. So just looking forward to being part of this process. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. I was like, District Eight. Okay. Next will be District Eight, which would be Betty.
Good morning, everyone. I'm going to throw in a few other things because I did, I do have some experience in superintendent search, and one of the things that I felt could, I feel could serve us well, if we as a board could review the process that's in place, is that going to work for us? Is it still valuable? While we can do some of these things simultaneously, I'd love to see us look at the process because ultimately, the Board is the one that is responsible for evaluating the Commissioner. So it is important that all of our voices are a part of that. Do we want to keep in place this process? Are there some things we'd like to add or take away? The other thing that is a, also a concern is, are the skills that we would expect the Commissioner to have? While Randy has done an outstanding job, I'm sure none of us would disagree with that, we still need to look, are there things that we would like to see? Are we in line? My point being, whether we change anything or not, is, is, is not what I'm throwing out, it's just that we all come together as a board and say, okay, we're good with this, and we can proceed in a, a way that's, that's going to keep us on the same page. So my thought is, well, yes, I know we have to get a search firm. I don't know if the search firm would lead us in the process of looking at those skills that we would like to see. Are there additional skills we'd like to add on? Are there some that can be taken away? If the search firm would, would need and organize that process, or if that's something that we do independently? I just would love to see us all come together, just as we're doing this morning, because it seems like so far it's a consensus that we do need to hire a search firm, a reputable search firm. I'm just concerned about the process, which comes first. I don't know where I am on my time, but.
You have 12 seconds.
12 seconds, then I'll stop.
Thank you. Appreciate that, Betty. Next would be District Nine, which is Jim, who is not here. So then District Ten, Debbie.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I, actually, I'm going to add on with Betty. Thank you, Betty. That was my perspective. That was the reason I voted against the agenda changes because I wasn't really keen on a committee making a lot of large decisions for the Board when this is not very hard for us to do, to have these special meetings, and to come together and, and discuss what we're looking for, what's important to us, how we want to proceed in this group, in this group setting, and especially if we're going to do something like appoint a committee, and it's not just open to all the membership, which would then effectively, you know, keep some people from even being involved at that level, even if they wanted to be. So anyway, I just, I think it's too preliminary for me to really go into what I would be looking for in a Commissioner. I do know that there's an anxiety to get the process going. I don't mind doing these special meetings. If it might do well to ask Commissioner Dr. Watson if he would, if, does he want us to get an interim, i- so that he doesn't have to just, you know, be dependent on us? That, that's just a question to ask, and that's where I would be at with that. That, I'm sure I'm under three minutes.
Yes, you are. Thank you. Okay. And I, I want to say with that, that a subcommittee would never be making decisions for the Board. That's, that's not what that's about. The RFP process requires, and maybe we need to speak into that a little bit more because I, I know that's been an ambiguous term, that's not always understood what that process requires. So we might need to step into that a little bit more to make sure we're all on the same page. But Danny, we'll go with, do you have anything you want to share?
I, I think a subcommittee is important, and also making sure all Board members understand everything that's going on, and the input and RFP process is important, and, and I want to expand the RFP, but if we need to get it started, because just because they're an educational firm, I'm looking for a CEO, and I'm not necessarily looking, I'm not from the education part, so I'm looking more for somebody to come in and look at what's going on in our department, every department, more efficiency. And having been through this process three times, and also as a business owner, it's real important to have somebody that will delve into things and not be afraid. So our search, the, unfortunately, the, we, we have to go through the RFP process, and it doesn't mean that we have to use it either. We, we don't have to use it if we don't want to. So that's, that's a good thing, actually. We, we can do the search ourselves if we so desire, but I appreciate actually having a firm that, that hires CEOs also to, to help us through the process, because we all need help. But we want to, we want to communicate, and everybody communicate together, and, but I think to keep the process going, we, we have a committee and move forward with the committee and keep the rest of the members informed about what's going on, and let you all have input too.
Yes, absolutely. There would never be a point where we're trying to keep out anybody. But my understanding of the RFP process is that it requires, help me, Dr. Watson, it's just something I always feel like I know in my head, but trying to actually say it out loud.
If you'd like, Madam Chair, I'd be happy to go over that with you, Dr. Hess, maybe after you give your thoughts on this. I'd be happy to do it.
Okay. So my thoughts, beyond my little opening spiel that I put out there, would be because of the RFP process, I do believe we'd need the subcommittee for sure. That's just part of that process, and we'll discuss that more. Beyond that, to me, getting a, the net cast for a search firm so that then we have all options on the table, what we do want to do, so that we are making that decision, but without having some knowledge of what search firms are out there, what that looks like, what that would all entail, I don't think we can make a solid decision without that. And the RFP process takes time, so it is important that we get that moving. But like Danny said, it does not mean we are required to use one. We just want to see what that would vet us for in that process. So I think for the majority of us, we're definitely looking at needing a search firm, wanting a search firm that will require the RFP process, which actually does require having some form of a subcommittee to enact that whole process. And I know Melanie and Jim understands that from the whole, because they've had to walk through it with the Board Attorney contract situation that we had to walk through. So that's my two cents. Let's go ahead if, is it Dr. Hess can maybe just give.
He's behind the pillar, I believe.
Do you people hide from me? Why do you hide from me? I thought I'd seen him earlier and then I couldn't.
So just to, as John comes up, the Department of Administration administers, so I'll kind of walk through what a local Board does. They, they do a bid process, and that bid process is very specifically laid out in law. In state government, you do an RFP process through the Department of Administration, and that's the centralized agency that houses all that. And that process then, once, once set up and started, comes back to you to give you options should you decide to use a search firm. Does not dictate to you to use a search firm at all, doesn't dictate to you to use a specific search firm. It just starts the process, and if you don't start that process, you can't engage in all the other things that are going to need to be done in, in your selection process. So John, if you could just go over with the Board how that plays out.
As simplistically as possible.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Commissioner, I will, I will do my best. So as a general matter, state law requires anything above a certain dollar threshold. For KSDE, that would be $25,000 per vendor, per fiscal year to be bid. And so what that looks like is that means that we have to draft specifications about what the work would look like. So what, and this does not necessarily mean what the Board is looking for in a Commissioner. It is what, what the Board would be looking for in a search firm, the work that the search firm would do with the Board. So meeting with, it could be meeting with the Board to develop what the Board wants out of a Commissioner. It can be, you know, typically, these would include also, you know, coming options on the table, what we do want to do, so that we are making that decision. But without having some knowledge of what search firms are out there, what that looks like, what that would all entail, I don't think we can make a solid decision without that. And the RFP process takes time, so it is important that we get that moving. But like Danny said, it does not mean we are required to use one. We just want to see what that would vet us for in that process. So I think for the majority of us, we're definitely looking at needing a search firm, wanting a search firm that will require the RFP process, which actually does require having some form of a subcommittee to enact that whole process. And I know Melanie and Jim understands that from the whole, because they've had to walk through it with the board attorney contract situation that we had to walk through. So that's my two cents. Let's go ahead if, is it Dr. Hess can maybe just give.
He's behind the pillar, I believe.
Do you people hide from me? Why do you hide from me? I thought I'd seen him earlier and then I couldn't.
So just as John comes up, the Department of Administration administers, so I'll kind of walk through what a local board does. They do a bid process, and that bid process is very specifically laid out in law. In state government, you do an RFP process through the Department of Administration, and that's the centralized agency that houses all that. And that process then, once set up and started, comes back to you to give you options should you desire to use a search firm. Does not dictate to you to use a search firm at all, doesn't dictate to you to use a specific search firm. It just starts the process. And if you don't start that process, you can't engage in all the other things that are going to need to be done in your selection process. So John, if you could just go over with the board how that plays out.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Commissioner, I will do my best. So as a general matter, state law requires anything above a certain dollar threshold. For KSDE, that would be $25,000 per vendor per fiscal year to be bid. And so what that looks like is that means that we have to draft specifications about what the work would look like. So what, and this does not necessarily mean what the board is looking for in a commissioner. It is what the board would be looking for in a search firm, the work that the search firm would do with the board. So meeting with, it could be meeting with the board to develop what the board wants out of a commissioner. It can be, you know, typically, these would include also, you know, coming up with the job description, posting, like advertising the job description at, you know, whatever types of entities you want the position advertised at, actively recruiting applicants, you know, all of those types of things, reviewing applications, passing them on to the board, helping the board review them, all of those types of things. As was indicated earlier, a lot of the type of administrative work, including like contacting candidates who were not chosen and that type of thing. So we have to come up with those specifications and submit those to the Office of Procurement. The Office of Procurement would then post that on the state's publicly, the state's public website. So it's a website that anybody in the public, any entity can go to and visit, see the specifications, and go through the process of submitting a bid for that. So that bid would include a technical proposal about how the bidder would achieve or propose to achieve the specifications, and then a cost proposal, which is what it would cost for it. So after those, after the bid window is open, it would, then the agency on behalf of the board would receive the cost or the technical proposals of all the vendors who submitted them. The technical proposals would have to be reviewed first, and this is just to see, to make sure that the vendors can actually do the work that the RFP asked for. And then at that point, we have to submit an analysis of the technical proposals, and then at that point, we get the cost proposals, and then you look at it as a collective entity. So, you know, you might have vendor A, B, and C can do the work, but vendor B is the low bid, and so maybe that's who we want, that's who we want to go with. Or vendor C might be slightly more, but because they're going to do this extra thing that the board, that, you know, is a little above and beyond included in the specification. So that's generally the process, and then there's a final recommendation back to procurement. I believe there probably want, we want to stick a process in the middle where the board approves that final recommendation while abiding by the required confidentiality agreements. And then, and then there would be a contract written and executed through the Department of Education with the vendor on behalf of, on behalf of the state board. And at that point, work would, work would be able to begin.
John, go over just briefly with the board, the timeframe, just to get to that stage.
Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. So state law, I don't want to say state practice, is to post bids for at least 30, 60, or 90, usually 30, 60, or 90 days. That means they have to be publicly available for that long. I have already talked to the Office of Procurement and contracts, and they are willing to post it for the shorter of the time period to meet the board's goal of getting this all started as soon as possible, so that Commissioner can be named as soon as possible. So there's that process, and then that is kind of, kind of set in stone. And then after that, the review process is kind of as fast as the board can make it. So, or a subcommittee can do it. I will assist whomever in that process, and it will be my highest priority. I think on the absolute best case scenario, there could probably be a contract executed by the end of November for it to start in December. On a kind of worst case scenario, you're looking at maybe a contract executed in January. So that kind of just pushes everything back a little bit. That best case scenario is really, and after talking to procurement, is about submitting the specifications to procurement, you know, Monday, on Monday, next week. So like, it's, the longer you push it back, starting the process is just going to push back the process. So, I mean, that's up to, that's up to the discretion of the board. But this stuff just kind of does take time. So if any of the vendors have questions about the bid, that will extend the timeframe that it's open, because we will have to, we will receive those questions, there will have to be answers provided, and so that extends the period in which the bid is open. So I think best case scenario, end of November. Worst case scenario, if we were talking January, February, something like that, before a contract is executed.
Okay, thank you. Betty, do you have a question?
I do. And thank you, because you've actually answered a lot of the concerns I mentioned. What I'm wondering, would the board then decide those extra things that we would want? As an example, when you were talking about meeting with the board, getting the preliminary guidelines in place. I'm assuming not all search firms are created equal. So if that's a correct assumption, would it not hinge on what it is the board is or the committee is wanting this search firm to do? Or, am I wrong? Would all of them be able to do everything from A to Z?
Thank you, Madam Chair. So one of the things that is included in bid specifications is a list of qualifications for the vendor to be selected. So it could be whatever the board decides, or a subcommittee of the board decides they want it to be. It could be written as, has a demonstrated history of leading national searches to select commissioners of education and be very specific to that. Or you could make it a little bit broader for national searches for, you know, state agency heads, heads of, heads of nonprofit organizations, you know, those types of things. And you could add other qualifications in there as well. So you might, so it's important to have the specifications, but also the qualifications, because, so that way you can, to help make the best decision as possible. And you have to include, if you don't include a qualification in what is posted, you can't judge the bidders by whether or not they meet a qualification. So you can only judge them based on the qualifications that are in the public RFP.
Gotcha. That helped, okay, okay. So, that being said, in all respects, yes. Who does? You have a question? Yeah, was everybody else okay? Like, I didn't see any hands up. Was anybody else needing to speak, have a question for John? Okay. So from here, I guess with the conversation that I and Vice Chair have had right before this meeting, which is why we put this on the agenda for the subcommittee, is that I, in my understanding, is we're on the same page, so hopefully I understood correctly. But that we would be asking the board to consider that the three-person subcommittee would be the officers, which would be I and Danny and Michelle Dobrosky, as our three-person subcommittee, which would simply be a, going through the RFP process. We would not be making decisions for this board about a search firm, whether we would get one or which one that would be. We would simply be walking through, making sure the RFP process gets going, because that has to happen. So qualification-wise, I know that Vice Chair Zach is looking for a little broader search than just somebody who's been a commissioner of education or has been fully just education. So it would broaden the parameters, it would not shrink the parameters on a search firm, which again, all will come back to this board to make a decision of. Does that make sense? So it would, it would simply, it would actually bring in more, I would assume, possibilities of search firms bidding. And then we would simply look at what they, what they have to offer. So my, yeah? So anything, anybody has to, what's thoughts? Melanie?
I have a question.
Okay, just a minute. I'm sorry, I caught Melanie first. So Debbie, just next.
Madam Chair, I guess that, based on what I heard Vice Chair Zach say and your comments just now, I want to be clear that what I'm hearing is we would be looking then at, like the two that have been shared with us today in print, these are both education-focused search firms. You're saying that we would also be looking for executive search firms to search for people who do not have a background in education?
That is a request.
Absolutely.
Just to see what.
I'm, I don't want to limit. Please don't take this wrong, but just because you've been in education, if you've never been in anything else, maybe you aren't used to doing efficiencies and doing things that need to be done. So I don't, I don't want to not include somebody that's been a CEO of an organization. Because I always go back to what I, if I don't know anything about education, but my number two person would know everything there is to know about education.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Does that clarify? Debbie, do you have a question or a comment? And Betty, I'll get to you next.
Yeah, I just wanted to clarify, because I was trying to follow what Dr. Hess was saying about the $25,000 vendor must bid. And I know that's for procurement, but I'm wondering, does that actually apply for hiring?
That is our understanding, yes. Dr. Hess.
Thank you, Madam Chair. In this case, the, since the end result would be a contract, a potential contract with a search firm, that is, that falls within that threshold there. The act of hiring the commissioner with whatever potential search firm would not, that there it is, it is, very specifically, the act of choosing a potential search firm to help the board.
Entering a contract, yeah.
Yes, and entering into a contract with that search firm is subject to the state's laws.
Okay. Debbie, does that answer your question?
As such, I think it would be important then to actually take the vote that we require a search firm, because you're committing funds and procurement, which would not be necessary if the board acted as a whole and just chose its commissioner, we wouldn't have to hire the search firm, which it does sound like the board wants that, but that just does seem like something that should be voted on and made established as the record.
Please understand that going out for RFP, A, does not cost us anything, and B, does not set us to having to hire a search firm. There's no cost and there's no set in stone what we have to do. It's simply putting more options on the table. Sir?
Well, except for it did require us to choose a committee, because we, what I'm hearing is we have to have a committee because we're doing an RFP. We have to have an RFP because it's over $25,000. But that's for the search firm. So there's a lot of decisions already being made, is what I'm saying.
No, no, ma'am, there's not.
Your point is well taken, Debbie. We're going to have a committee, that doesn't mean we're going to hire a search firm. We may do it as a 10-member board.
We will definitely do it as a 10-member board.
With a committee, telling the committee kind of what we want to see, and then go from there. And the committee's going to bring back things to the board to make sure the board's on board with the things that the committee is seeing.
And Betty, did you have a question? Comment?
Actually, I have a comment, and it really is in line with something that Debbie is pointing out procedurally. If we are going to get a search firm, then I'd like to see us commit to, yes, we're going to get a search firm. Otherwise, having this committee look at something and the board is not on board with that idea, it's a waste of time. So I really would like to see us decide as a board, which I believe this is important enough, that we need a search firm. I will underscore that there's probably or maybe two to three people that have had experience with this kind of search, but the majority of the board, this is something new. So yes, we do need the guidance, we do need the help, we do need the direction. It is a board decision, but I'd like to see us say, we are on board with that, then commit to finding a firm that's going to do the job. That way, we have a process. So my thought kind of shifted, just in view of something that both Debbie and Danny are talking about. I really would like to see us commit to, are we interested in getting a search firm or not? Thank you.
Well, from what I heard previously, there is interest in looking at search firms. So if I misunderstood, but that process takes time, and if we don't start it, it really backs us up. But that doesn't lock us in, because we don't know what our options are.
I think you're missing, I think you're missing my point. Yes, I heard a consensus, just in the majority of the people that did speak, that believe a search firm can help, will help, and is the best option. I'd just like to see us say, okay, this is the process, we are interested. I don't like holding that card on the table that we can do this ourselves, because we're kidding ourselves if we think we can do this by ourselves.
I would tend to agree with you. I would tend to agree with you.
I just say, boots on the ground, this is what we're going to commit to, and let's start the process with the majority being on board.
Okay, so here's what I would propose, that with the nomination that's been made for a three-person subcommittee, that, and we have a vote on that, that takes us into the space of, we have a serious desire to use a search firm. Does that make sense?
That reminds me, that actually was what I was going to address, and then I got sidetracked, which, I mean, I actually am wondering, I know that, I don't know if this is just your authority to appoint the three people that are, that you did. And if that's the case, then feedback might not be that critical, but I really would like to.
No, what I'm saying is that I and Vice Chair Zach have nominated for the board to consider the three of us, so the two of us with Michelle Dobrosky, being that subcommittee, and asking this board to vote on that nomination. So that's my, that's my request.
Okay, I got you.
And then I need to ask real quick, Board Attorney Ferguson, do we need to do a motion to suspend rules to do, to take that vote?
Well, technically, according to the rules, I mean, you, but this is such a unique situation, you have a special meeting, and it's not a regular, you know, agenda. But, you know, technically, your board policy does require that you suspend the rules to take action, so I would recommend it.
Okay, thank you. And Debbie, did you have a question?
One, Larry took action that I don't understand. You already took action changing the agenda, so to the next item, to set the board, but the committee. What I did have in my three-minute thing was my concern is I could see the writing on the wall, is that the committee would be appointed, that the decision would be made for the board, who would be on the committee? And it doesn't seem to be the habit of opening up these committees for volunteers from the board to participate. And so that's, that seems to be the habit that we're going into, and I'm not sure that that's really good policy to have.
But it is policy. But it is actually policy.
Long-term, that we do committees by appointment, but you didn't open it for anybody else to join in the committee. And what I experienced last time is that I was not even allowed to participate via Zoom to just participate, listen in on the, the subcommittees that you're making. to just participate, listen in on the subcommittees that you're making. If they're going to be open, I think that we need to be making provisions as we do in these special means, so that I can at least listen to what's being discussed in the meeting, because I just want to be informed. I don't have to have a voice.
Board Member Potter, we are on one subject, and that's going to have to be another conversation if you're pushing back on policy.
We're on the subject of the subcommittee, right?
The nomination, I literally am quoting the policy, that on a temporary subcommittee, that the chair and vice chair nominate and ask for the board to vote. That is what I'm doing, per policy. So to take that vote, we are going to ask for a motion to suspend the rules, so we may take action in the same board meeting. So may I have a motion to suspend rules?
I move that we suspend the rules to take action on the development of a subcommittee.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Dan. All in favor of the motion, please raise your hand. Betty, are you, I can't tell what you're doing. Okay, so where did that put us? I'm sorry. Seven, all against. One, present not voting, one, seven, one, one. Motion passes to suspend rules. So now I would entertain a motion for approving the nominated subcommittee. Melanie moves, second. Michelle, thank you. All in favor? Dennis, what do you? Do we have six? Okay, I am unsure where we're at. I need a, yes, who is in favor of the nominated subcommittee? Six, okay. Two, three. So six, three. Okay, board, motion passes. We will do quick work to get the RFP process in place so we can bring to the board the search firms that then would be eligible to meet those specifications. The board will have a decision-making in every part of this process. Please understand that. Yes, because the subcommittee, but it will be physically. The subcommittee, because of the new coma rules, as a three-person, will be an open meeting, but they will be in-person meetings, so just like our policy meetings are done. So Commissioner, did you have anything you wanted to add?
No, ma'am.
Mr. Ferguson, any comments? Okay, thank you. Thank you, board. I appreciate your time. We will have our next meeting, our special meeting, on October 13th at 3:00 p.m., which is the Monday before our regular board meeting. So we would like, hopefully, everybody can be present, since that's the day before our regular meeting. But that's what we will be next. Yes, we will inform every, yes, that will be always informing and posted for the public whenever the subcommittee is meeting. So thank you, appreciate your time. We adjourned until October 13th.